Good morning, and thank you for joining us this morning for our city council budget session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the role?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. Item number two is fiscal year 2025 budget development overview. Gene Hill, Chief Financial Officer, CFO, will give a brief overview of the budget development items to create the city's fiscal year 2025 budget. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Smile, Gene.
Smile?
He looks grand.
I'm still, I'm still having jet lag, you know? Anyway, good morning, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. I've got Bonnie with me, and again, I'd like to thank the finance team for helping getting this done. What I want to do is go through, real quickly, just the outline, you know, I just again want to bring up the collaborative budgeting, outcome-based budgeting, economic outlook. And the reason I want to cover that is I think it's really important when we start talking about, you know, interest earned and different things, and I think it's really important to touch base on that. And then we'll go over the revenues, then Heather will come up and go over her stuff, and then we'll talk about fee income. Again, I just want to touch base on the rating agencies. So for the collaboration, again, this is so important that we establish long-term visions, we build trust and open communication, we use collaborative or collective decision-making, and we create, you know, clear rules so that we treat everybody fairly when we're going through the budget process. And please just stop me if you have any questions. Again, this is kind of how it works, right? We get the things that the citizens need, we look at the assets, the infrastructure, the land uses, that comes into the budget, we look at the long-term financial plan, kind of the taxing on it, and then the general fund, and then that moves into performance measurements and accounting reports and how we account for it. Again, I think the most important part is we communicate and we listen, and that we develop those relationships to make sure that we can do that. From the finance standpoint, it's really, really important for us to understand the pressures that the individual department heads are in, because it's different than what we find, you know, what we face. And again, I just like everybody to communicate with us so we can help others help us to help them. This is just kind of a quadrant that kind of tells you, you know, where you should be at. And if you start in the upper right-hand corner, it's the most optimum place, you know, where we really are looking at what is needed and the high priorities, and that's where we want to be focused at. And then you come down to the low end where it's just, you know, lower priorities and it's not that important, you know, like budgets, right? It's not that important. Any questions thus far? Okay. Again, outcome budgeting is really, how can we use, get more out of our dollars per use? How can we support the mayor and the council and the priorities? And then what evidence is there to support these proposals? And then how do you measure it? And with that, I'd like to, this is a book that I've got several copies that if you would like to read it, this is about outcome-based budgeting. It's based on when Baltimore was in trouble and how they turned Baltimore City around. And credit should go to Rick for introducing me to that. But I've got several copies again, if any council members or department heads would like to borrow a copy, I'd really love to have them so they can understand what the thought process that, and the difference between zero-based budgeting or just continuing just basing it off of last year's budget versus kind of seeking for an outcome to help the city. So with that, I'm going to jump into the economic side. You know, you'll hear, we're going to see drops in interest rate. Not going to happen because inflation is still rampant here. And it's not going to be for at least 18 months before we see interest rates drop. I mean, the Fed's not going to do it. I'll cover a couple of points to support this, but just, I want to just cover a little humor. It's humor to me, it may not be humor to other people, so I should clarify that, right? But if you go back to, you know, Home Alone, the movie a long time ago, when Kevin went to do his little shopping, these are kind of the list of things that I think we all buy, right? I mean, maybe not the TV dinners, but you know, you get your detergent, your orange juice, your milk, your eggs. And these are things that we buy all the time, whereas the government will change the definitions at different times, right? You know, they used to use the CPI, then they went to the PPE, and then they went to the, now it's the PCE. And they just keep changing the measure, they keep changing the measurement, so it's really hard to find sometimes. So I just wanted to run through this for, again, a little bit of fun here. So if you look at the humor of this, in, originally it cost 19 bucks for that bag of goods, right? 2022, it was 44 bucks or whatever. In one year, it went from 44 to 72 dollars, right? That was the inflation we saw in '23. And the point to make this too is even if inflation goes down, or inflation decreases, you know, you get into disflation, the price of those goods still don't go down, right? They're still more expensive. The reason I bring this up, right, is we have employees who are suffering, we have taxpayers who are suffering because of this economy we're in right now, and it's not, it's not Democrat-Republican, it's always, they just keep kicking the can down the road. And that's my, my take on it. But here's just a couple of things to look at. So those of us who were around back in the eighties, right, when, in Carter's time, we saw interest rates as high as 21%. Prime rate was 21%. So high interest rates is not something new or that I haven't seen before, but from, you know, basically from February 17, you know, we haven't seen these higher rates for about 15 years. And so the economy has had free money for a long time. I mean, kind of like Japan, Japan was in this negative interest rate environment for two decades. So that's just kind of tracking. I don't, again, I don't see this coming down for quite a while, at least 18 months. The other thing, if you go down to the slide on the money supply, M2 is the measurement that the Fed measures to, to basically look at the money supply. We've never seen the money supply contract until now. But if you go back to 2008, right, during the TARP, when they put out the TARP, we had that great recession. They put, you know, trillion dollars in to buy the TARP, all the bad bonds and stuff that were out there. We have seen, so they put a trillion in then, at COVID, they put another trillion plus in, and I'm just talking about the Treasury side, not the Fed. And then you've seen Biden do his inflation fighting thing, which is not inflation fighting, but we've seen literally, if you do the multiplier effect, money going into the system, we've seen $60 trillion pumped into this economy over the past five, 10 years. So inflation, you know, the other thing I think we need to think about too, or just remember is, the US has been the reserve, world reserve currency, so we could just keep spending money and China would buy it, Japan would buy it. Guess what? China's not buying it anymore. Japan's actually liquidating its US dollar reserves. So you're going to have, again, more money chasing too few of goods, so inflation is not going to go away anytime soon. And again, it doesn't matter which party it is, right? We're still going to be stuck with inflation for a while. And again, please interrupt me. Again, there's, there's many different ways to look at this. This is just data points that I like.
Gene, is there any way you can make that bigger so we can read it?
I can't even read it on here. I can try, Rick. Excuse me, Councilmember, Gene.
If you put it on the whole.
Yeah, on the whole screen, yeah.
Take your slides on the side away.
I could do that, but then I can't see it.
Oh.
I apologize. Is that?
That helps.
That helps. Again, so you can, down, down here, Mr. Cheatham, you can see the, where the money supply is actually decreasing. And what that boils down to is it's less money in the economy, right? They're pulling money out of the economy. Next time, I'll try to use a full sheet instead of just trying to blow it down so much, but I wanted to, can you see that one okay?
Barely.
Barely. What's important about the, one in the lower left-hand side is, right, after COVID, the blue line tracks the 55 to 85-year-olds, retired, they're not coming back in the job market, right? So that is why we have a problem with the labor market. They're never coming back. I mean, maybe they go back, but that'd be it. The red line shows the 22 to 55-year-old worker. They're coming back and we're getting some stabilization there. But what's interesting is because there is a shortage of workers, right, we have seen that the productivity of workers in the upper left-hand side is down because they can demand more and they don't have to do as much, right? So productivity is down. The AI is going to change that. You know, over time, AI will change the, the productivity of the country. But again, just a couple of points I just wanted to just point out, and then the other one that I think is really important, this is the national debt. We're currently at 34 trillion. By 2033, they're saying it's going to be 54 trillion. That is two times almost of the GDP of the country. The country's GDP, 25 to 27 trillion, right? Never, anyway. It's, it's really hard to sustain that. And I'll talk in a second about that. This red line on the right-hand side depicts the interest only of the national debt. It now costs more for the interest on the debt than Medicare. So what, what happens is the discretionary spending will continue to decrease, and then you have what, where it puts pressure for the government to keep funding this, interest rates have to go up, right? Because there's less demand for the Treasuries because of the situation we're in. So because of that, again, we'll continue to see rates go up, or at least stay relatively flat. Again, the reason I brought this all up was just to support that I don't think we're going to see inflation going away anytime soon. That's the main reason I want to do this. One last thing is, this lower left-hand side is social security. When it was originally set up, right, 16 to 1, 16 people paid in, one person took out. By 2035, two people pay in, one person takes it out. Again, not sustainable. So with that, I'll summarize here and then jump into the budget. So we're really seeing the headwinds kind of are the international uncertainty with, right now, I believe there's 32 conflicts worldwide going on, shift in the employment base, higher prices, inflation, a strong labor market, and a Fed debt on the tailwinds, you know, got a good labor market here, good honest working people in this area, a strong, you know, the Western states are really strong right now in comparison to everybody else. Consumer spending is still pretty strong, and then the government stimulus. And just to remind the council, we're, we are a double 2A rating, the city, right here. So we're in a really good investment-grade quality. And again, if you get into what they, we used to call junk bonds, but they call high-yield bonds now, is triple B, right, where the line goes across. So anything above that is investment-grade, it's a good place to be. And the city's done a really good job of, I mean, I want to see us to continue to do that, right?
Gene, can you repeat that?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat that? The grading?
The investment side?
Mm-hmm.
So again, investment grade is anything above triple B minus right here, this, this, depending on the rating agency, right? So moving into triple B, we are at a double A1, or even if it's an A2, we as a city are in a really good position. So that if we have, did you have something? Just, just Johnny? Okay. Point is, is if we ever have to go to the debt markets, we're in a good position. And also, as they come out with this new social rating stuff that eventually we'll see move into, you know, we're in good shape, good shape too, because we are a very diverse community. And I know that the council and the members continue to try to strive to make that happen. So with that, I'm going to jump, if there's no more questions, kind of on the outlook.
So with this, that last piece, piece that you were talking about with the rating, so would you say that we've been, for the most part, fiscally responsible?
Yes, I think we have been. Can we do more? I think there's a lot more we could do, and I think we're required to do more. But I do believe that the city has been very fiscally responsible. You know, on the reporting side, when you have your CFO die from a brain aneurysm, you know, it's one of those things, it's an act of God. And I think people tried, but I think Bonnie has done, honestly, Bonnie and the staff have done such a great job, and my hat's totally off to them, of getting out of that hole into where we're, you know, on schedule. And so I think we're very fiscally responsible. I don't think we're trying to do anything that's not in line and to improve. Does that answer your question?
That, that does. I just wanted to, I've always thought we were pretty fiscally responsible, and I've always thought that we do a pretty good job, especially as this council. And so I, I just wanted you to reiterate that, and I just wanted to hear it from your point of view as a CFO, what your thoughts were on how we are with, with our finances within the community. And I also want to say, I appreciate you and Bonnie and the rest of your staff for what you guys do and for what you bring to the table, and for your, your presentations, even touching into the national and international economy, because it trickles back onto the cities. And so I appreciate your, your diligence there.
Thank you, Corey.
Corey, Corey works.
Okay. Anyway, I think what's really important too, for, I think the citizens and for everybody to understand is, for every dollar, we're competing against everybody, right? Every dollar, every business that we try to bring here, we're competing against China, we're competing against India, we're competing against all these other places. And so we have to have a socially responsible, a fiscally responsible community, which we are. And, and that's so important. And I thank you for bringing that up, Corey.
Thank you.
Ready to dive into the fun stuff?
Let's jump in. We're going to move to item 3 of the fiscal year 2025 revenue forecast. I won't read everything else out here.
Can you see that okay? I know it's, it's.
Yes.
You know, for my eyes, I have to get down here and look at it like this, but, okay. So what we have on the top, on the headings, right, is, so we've got fiscal year 21 audited, fiscal year 22 audited, fiscal year 23, which are actuals, but are in the process of being audited. And then we have the budget for 25, or excuse me, the fiscal budget for 24. And this is all for comparison, right? I just want to make sure that you can see where we're at. And then this is kind of the recommendation that I've gone over with the mayor and I think where we're at. So with that, if we stay at the 3% on the task, on the tax ask, I don't know if I can get that right yet, you'll see that it's 993,000, right? And that's based off of 33,102,000, which is the, you know, the highest of the last three years that we set our, kind of our tax ask based off of. So with that, and again, please just interrupt me at any point if you have a question. For the general fund, I'm asking for the .9, which is the max, which is the $297,000 to go into the general fund. New construction, I've held it flat, you know, in the estimation, the annexation, again, I've held that flat, and then tax reimbursement incentives, kept it flat. This 542, 400, if I get it right, 452,000, that's just an in and an out for accounting. So you'll see that we take it out on the top, we add it back in at the bottom. So it's no effect, right? Here's where it gets kind of interesting. I talked to Jared, excuse me, Justin, at the AIC, and they're actually predicting that using the AICs that we'll see sales revenues will go down from the peak of 7 million last year. And so off to the side, pull that over where you can see that, their estimates, 5.8 million. I think we can do 6 million. And he was comfortable as I talked to him about that, maybe a little more, but again, through the process, I just want to have this $6 million. So that's where that's at. The liquor tax.
Real quick, before we move on, Mr. Mayor, is that, is that a reflection of, like, actual sales of products in Idaho, or is that a reflection of some change of the sharing model or distribution model of the city?
A change in the model.
Okay.
It's, they're actually seeing a decrease. You know, they, we kind of peaked. At least that's my understanding, is we, we've kind of peaked and it's, it's kind of tapering off a little.
Okay.
You know, I, I can see where people, you know, as you're cutting back, having for food and fuel and things like that, where spending will go down a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Good or bad, you know, it seems that liquor prices go, liquor, liquor consumption goes up during tough times. So I think we're going to see that. Maybe we could go up to 800,000, you know, but I think 7, 80 is kind of a, a nice number to start with. And that's kind of where the AIC was at on that. Electric franchise, I, I think we'll be at that, you know, 577 to 600,000. Natural gas, 408, I think is pretty good. The cable franchise, though, you know, that continues to kind of, we're seeing that drop off a little bit. On the interest side, 5 million comparison to 3 million, you may say is aggressive. Let me walk you through this. So fiscal year 24, year to date, we have earned $3.1 million in seven months. We've got five months left. I think I can bring it in, excuse me, I think the city can bring it in, excuse me, for, using that pronoun, at 5.3. So again, the reason I bring that up is that gives us the port that for this fiscal year, we can do 5 million. And we're going to need it because of, you know, which Heather will address, so I will talk about healthcare costs, that's, but we're going to need it, everything we can get.
Gene, which.
Yes, ma'am.
Which amount was 5.3?
So for fiscal year 24, I'm happy to send you an email on this. Basically.
It was the interest earned, and the interest earned for FY 20, for this year, FY 24 interest earned.
And that's estimating what it will be at the end?
At the end, it's an estimate of what we will be at the end, and it's a pretty solid estimate.
Okay.
So just, just to give you an idea though, so again, we budgeted 3.1 million, right? We're currently at 3.132. It's at 101%, seven months, so we've got five months left.
Councilmember Cheatham?
I, I think Gene's projections of sales tax are very safe. I got a thing from the governor's office yesterday, and sales tax collection, now they're on a different calendar year than we are, different fiscal year, because theirs begins July 1, but they're basically dead flat with what happened last year. So this, this drop, I think, is a very conservative projection of what we'll probably see in sales taxes.
That was my feel too, when Gene and I talked the other day. I, I felt that same thing, and from some of the stuff that we had heard and we had talked about, and so I'm comfortable with the $6 million. I, I think you could increase a little bit, but I think 6 million is a good conservative number.
Yeah.
And I also think that the interest earned is at $5 million is a conservative number as well.
Any other questions for anyone? Okay. You know, so building, jumping down to the delinquent interest on the mobile homes, you know, 200,000, 210, building permits, we're, I think we're tracking pretty close to the 950, and we haven't even, again, we're not in the season yet, right? So Richard may have a different thought, but I, I think 900,000, 919, we're probably safe. You know, on the court side, who knows, average 180 coming across. I think we could be light, I think on the fees, right, other fees, grants and stuff like that, we may be a little light, there may be some room there, because when I looked at the year-to-date for fiscal year, you know, annualized the year-to-date for fiscal year 24, we're coming in around 2.2 million. So there may be some room there for us. Does everyone understand when I say that, what I mean? I just want to make sure that I'm not trying to speak at the.
By light, you mean that it could be more?
More, yes, yes. I think with the grant department person we've got, I think that we can do some stuff there. And, you know, just everybody, everybody's really helpful. And so that kind of gets us to where we're at this 40 million for total revenue in the, in the general fund. It's about a million over what it was last year. And the biggest, again, the biggest decrease is the drop in sales tax. And that's about a million. So we, we make up 2 million in the interest earned, but we're going to lose a million on the sell side, sales tax.
Sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Nichols?
Hey, Gene, could you go back up to the interest?
Absolutely.
So we have $5 million in interest income. That's roughly what amount of money and what interest rate to get to that?
That is calculated at roughly, I knew you were going to ask that. So it is, the average interest, the trailing 12 months, was $97 million. The trailing 12-month interest or yield was 5%. And so I'm just saying that I believe that, on this calculation, I was just using 100 million at 5%.
Got it.
And again, I think there's, as the mayor's saying conservatively, I think there's some things we can do to ensure that we come in at that, maybe a little bit.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. One, one thing too is, you know, in the title, this excludes all the interest, or excuse me, all of the inter-funds or any development contributions. I just want to make sure so that we're clear on that, with the exception of Fund II or the liability insurance. I just wanted to, you know, quickly go over this, where premiums are just, as you know, are just going through the roof because of the risks and stuff. So of the 993,000, 198,000 we had to put there so that we could make sure we have enough to cover the premiums for our liability insurance, about 19%, just, you know, where we're at. Streets is a, is a challenge. It's Tom's fault. You may want to come up here, just so you can defend yourself, right?
Oh, I'll defend myself.
So on the property tax side, you know, I tried to get as much as I could into streets. It's about 250,000. But what the problem is here is that the bill HO 354 expired. It was for fiscal year 23 and 24, and that takes a million four out of our street budget. Okay? And jump in, Tom, anytime if you've got more to add to this. And so the road bridge, we think will come in, you know, around 7:50, or 7:30, where it's, where it's been at. The right-of-way, again, I'm trying to make, that's, let me just, got to choose my words a little better here. Trying to change with, as the departments have changed, you know, and our, our needs have changed, I'm changing the methodology that we're calculating some of these things on. And so we're going to, on this right-of-way, it'll be about 1.6 million, you know, which I think is a fair way for us to get money to, as much as we can to streets so that they can continue to do their work. Do you have anything you want to?
Yeah, Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. So the highway user dollars was kind of a shock to all of us. As you can see over the past, since '22, and if you go back even farther, there's been this pretty steady trend of, and so we were feeling pretty comfortable with that trend. And their projections now you're seeing are going back to close to 22 numbers for highway user. It's pretty, not quite 22, but it was a pretty good, pretty good hit. I really don't know what that's associated to, really don't, unless people are driving less. The highway user money comes from gas tax, so every gallon of gas you put in, you get a certain amount. The way that is distributed amongst cities is by population. So you get a certain amount of highway user per, for population, the counties get it by lane miles. And so that one was kind of a big shock when Gene and I talked about that. And so that one was kind of a big shock when Gene and I talked about that, and I don't really have much of an explanation on that one either. The right-of-way fees has been very anemic for a long time, so Gene and I have kind of put together we think a fairly reasonable way to, to calculate those moving forward, that, that makes pretty good sense to us. But at the end of the day, it's a, it's a pretty big hit, so we're going to have to take a look at that and see what we could do with that.
Questions?
You know, I, I know it's a big hit and stuff, I'm not super concerned with that because we knew legislation was going to stop, it stopped, we're back to where we were, we've got some reserves, we've got some stuff, and we'll, we'll get it figured out.
I Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a hit, but, but we knew that hit was coming at some point, we just weren't sure when it was, and, and we're there, so.
And I, I think we're prepared for that.
Yeah.
It's just going to be a matter of how we get to that point.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You know, I think some reasoning for, to see the decrease, there's an increasing trend toward more fuel-efficient vehicles and electric, electrification of vehicles, and that's simply reduced the consumption of gasoline. And I think we're seeing that in the increase in prices too. You know, at three seventy-nine a gallon, people aren't driving as much as they used to, and they're trying to stretch those, those gallons further than they ever have, and there's less revenue being generated.
Well, and the electric vehicle market, that, so the way they've worked that is you now charge the registration fee when you register it, but it's kind of a one-time fee, you know, that lasts for however long your registration is, and, and it, it's really not an ongoing thing that covers the wear and tear of the, because they're just like every other vehicle, they beat up the road just as much as anything else, so.
And when that tax was set up, it wasn't exactly set up to be equal to gasoline consumption in electric miles covered per charge.
Correct.
It was set low. We battled that out on the AIC legislative board at one meeting, I remember that, and we lost the battle in the legislature. And they're not being charged an equivalent amount for the wear and tear they're causing on our roads.
Correct. And I, I think there's actually some, and I hate to say this, but there's actually, I think, some improvement on high-rides as well, you know, because they're kind of the best of both worlds, and they drive the same roads that everybody else does, so. There's just a lot of factors, I think, that go into it, I think, you know, everybody's hurting in their pocketbook right now, so they're not driving as much, and that's just kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So as we, we go on down, you know, recreation, on, we've added a, you know, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and again, we're hitting the max on the tax, which is the six tenths of a percent. Cemetery, the same thing, we hit the max on that for an increase of thirteen thousand dollars. Airport, nineteen thousand, hit the max. Library, you know, it's point oh-one percent, three thousand bucks. Capital improvements, didn't do a whole lot there, but we'll, we'll address that later. But you can see, here's the total of the task, the tax, I can't get that right, tax ask of nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, a three percent. I am not, at this time, suggesting we do anything in the foregone. I think we're, we should be okay without that. Then in the non-property tax revenues, it was, we're down a little bit on fees, but from the rate studies, right, we're going to continue at the three percent on the enterprise funds. So basically for a total of about ninety, you call it a hundred million if you will, but ninety-nine point six million is the revenue side this year excluding grants, you know, which we, we just don't know, and then obviously fee income, it's kind of a variable, we just really don't have that much about.
What was the number, sorry, on the ninety-nine point six million roughly?
What's this, this number right here?
I, I can't read the number.
Okay, so it's, it's, this, this is total government-wide revenue for fiscal year budget twenty-five.
Yeah, I just need the number.
Ninety-nine million,
Okay.
Six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Okay.
I will send this to you guys.
Thank you.
So that you have it. I apologize not being able to get it to you in advance, but it's been kind of a pretty liquid document over the last little bit.
No worries.
So if there's not any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Heather for her time, and then I'll talk to you again on the fee income.
Questions, counsel? Okay, thank you. And we'll move to gen. Adam for Workman's Compensation of Benefits. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director, will give a presentation regarding the following. One, workers' compensation modifier. Two, tuition reimbursement. Three, life insurance.
Good morning.
Good morning, Heather.
I'm always happy when it's morning and we're here, and it's not after lunch. So Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director, I'm going to walk you through the major parts of our personnel budget build this morning. So these are the items, there's the agenda numbers, and then these are the items we're actually going to go through. We do have six action items today, we are looking for direction for the budget build only. These are not final decisions, and they can be changed later in the budget process. So first up is the workers' compensation modifier. We are requesting to build the budget at a hundred percent for the modifier, currently we sit at ninety-five percent. Last year that increase was about fifty-eight thousand, and twenty-eight thousand of that was to the general fund. I can't provide you with a nice estimate this year, because last year I had full personnel costs when I sat before you. We are in negotiations with FIRE, so I don't have their costs, and I also have not bringing a table adjustment for general employees today. We're just here to talk about a step movement. So this is probably going to come in around sixty-five thousand overall, and about thirty of that to the general fund, but that is a very rough estimate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So Heather, a hun, ninety-five percent, and a hundred percent modifying what?
Um, so I am not an expert in this, and Andrea is off today, I can bring Ann up.
Or Jared, so.
I, I think I said the correct person.
Well, I'm not arguing there.
Sorry, Jared.
I think I heard the eye roll.
I heard the sigh from here.
Is this the Parks and Rec take on the modifier?
Yes. So you want Ann Butler, Parks and Rec Director, formerly Risk Manager. So the modifier is in essence kind of our safety. And so what that means is we'll have a rating for our experience, and then we're also having a rating that we're funding. So what we're talking about is the funding side of that. For several years, we were funding at seventy or eighty percent, but our experience was a hundred and five, right? So the goal has always been to get us to a hundred percent. We can actually fund it above a hundred percent if we wanted to, but a hundred percent seems to be a good ebb and flow. Some years were a little high, some years were a little lower. Does that make sense?
No. Again, a hundred percent of what?
It, well, it's a hundred percent of the amount we're trying to put in, and I'm trying to think of the best way to describe this to you. It's a comparison of our current rating with where we need to be. Does that make a little more sense?
No, no.
Okay, I can tell on your face it doesn't. We get an insurance measurement of what our safety standard should be comparing us to others, and that's where that number comes from.
So if you're going from ninety-five percent to a hundred percent, that's a good thing?
Yes, because we have been funding it typically, we have literally been at a hundred and five percent. Our insurance, you know, we're having a lot of injuries, a lot of claims that are costing us a lot, but we're only funding it at eighty-five percent. Now, ideally, you're trying to get it even and have a balance, but where we're self-funded, the goal is to actually have some extra in the tank in case of a catastrophic claim.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
Thanks. Ann's going to stop coming when I'm presenting something risky on my floor here. So do you guys want to take action items as we go through them?
So let's, I was just going to say that, let's just, what do you think, counsel, is this where we want to be?
Yes, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so I think that the consensus is to, to do this and prepare it this way, knowing it may change, but prepare it.
And as we get a more firm number based on some of the other direction we get today, we can bring a better number back to you. Action item two, these are our tuition reimbursement funding requests for fiscal year twenty-five. Currently, we have fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of requests. Forty-three thousand of those are in the general fund, and the other fourteen thousand are split at cost in multiple funds. This is defined in CBA, so some of these we have to fund, and the rest is in the handbook. HR's recommendation is to fully fund this program this year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We've not been using all of this education benefit, as I remember.
So the good news is we carry the money from year to year, and you'll notice there are negatives in the fund request, because everyone in the general fund, it's kind of one pool. So if, like, in this case, Animal Services didn't use their money in twenty-four, we're taking that out of future requests, so we are decreasing it. We're not carrying a big fund balance here.
Yeah.
We keep it very lean.
Counsel, what do you think about this? I've got a couple head nods to, to keep it.
I think it's important.
It's important, so let's keep it and move forward.
Action item three, we did do an RFP for our life insurance this year, AJ with GBS benefits handled that for us. We did have six responses. Currently, we are with Symetra, the benefit is fifteen thousand for an employee, that's what we bid across the board. The annual cost of that is roughly ten thousand dollars. HR is recommending to stay with Symetra. We could save fourteen hundred dollars by moving to US-able life. It costs more in administration to make that change for the year. Also, we have had to utilize this benefit while we've been with Symetra, and they were very good to work with for both the employee and HR, so we would recommend staying with Symetra.
But it looks like the benefit would be better if we moved to MetLife.
And that was a hard decision for HR, so we are with MetLife for dental and vision, and while they offer very good rates, they are incredibly hard to work with administratively, both for employees and HR. In a situation where you have to help an employee get their life insurance, you want someone that has very good customer service and is easy to work with. We could make the shift, it's just the customer service is a little lacking at MetLife. I hope they're not watching.
What, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The, the difference or disparity between the spouse benefit for Symetra and MetLife, what, why is that so huge?
That's how they bid it. If you'll notice though, their child benefit is a lot less, that's age-bracketed.
True.
So if you have a younger child, I think it's like under three that passes away, it's like a hundred dollar payout. This is not the most cheery of topics I bring to you.
No.
I wouldn't define most of your topics as cheery, though.
They're so enjoyable. A couple years ago, we did move from, I think, ten or twelve thousand up to fifteen. We are still very much behind the trend on how much life insurance we should be offering. It's ten thousand dollars for the year, that seems like very low-hanging fruit, but personnel is a very expensive part of the city budget because we are a service organization. This is one benefit we would like to beef up at, up at some point, it's just never the right year to do that.
I'd say leave it.
Leave it?
Yeah.
Leave it, I've got at, at least four head nods to leave it, so. I can't see the very end down there. So let's leave it for now.
Um, so next up, we're going to talk about positions. Some of you have been through position requests with, with me, some of you have not, so I'm just going to give you a brief summary of how this works. We've been budgeting since December, new position requests come in between December and February. HR works with the departments to define those job descriptions and place them on our current pay scales. We then sit down with the mayor and we go through all the requests, and we address questions, we pull things, we change things. I then present them to you today. Ideally, this is where you tell me to add them to the budget for, so we can build with the number and then take it out later. It's always easier to subtract than add. Department presentations are coming at us early in June, and then we have tax solution meetings in late June. You can pull positions all the way up until basically the work session and the hearing review. We would prefer you do it before then, because then it's easier to balance the budget. I just kind of wanted to give you a run-through of what that timeline looks like overall. Now, when we're talking about positions, FTE, which is a full-time equivalent, is different than a headcount. A person is one headcount. A position is anywhere from half an FTE to a full FTE, depending on the number of hours the position works here. All the positions you're seeing requested this year are the full FTE, which is a full forty hours a week or two thousand eighty per year. They're on full-time medical, dental, and vision rates. And then when we talk about the positions, we talk about all elements of compensation, that's ad pays benefits and then their annual wages. So those three things are included in the costs as we discuss these. So we are looking for authority only to add six paramedic positions to the county, to the ambulance budget, and now that's only authority that county would have to come up with the revenue. So if the revenue doesn't come in, they don't expend this money. Last year, we had discussed, and it was actually in the presentation, and we pulled it based on feedback from the county. Chief O'Hern and I decided to put it in this year, and the mayor has said that's a good idea. So if they do fund those extra positions, that it's already built in and we don't have to budget amend.
We know that the county's looking to add some positions into South County, and so it's probably prudent to do this, counsel, but this is up to you to, to do and up to county to fund.
Yeah, the county will do it.
If the county does it, it doesn't, it's not a tax ask for, for the city at all, and so I've got one, yeah, that's Adam, the authority for him, and
I'm a yes.
I'm seeing heads nod, so, okay.
Just so you are aware, the numbers on this are going to be very wrong, because we are in negotiations with FIRE, and we are talking about a new sort of structure in their department. I don't know what those numbers were tally out to, but we will build the authority around what we settle on with the union. We do have four position requests this year, and this is something we have not brought before you previously. We've talked about it for several years as executive staff, and we decided to give it a go this year. We are looking to add four headcount, two full-time in parks and two full-time in street. However, those positions will spend six months of the year with parks and six months of the year with street. We're going to split that FTE, but each department will be paying for a total of two. They're coming at the same pay grade, they have very similar job descriptions as far as certification requirements, they have CDL. It is a very different approach that we've talked about. The problem is Parks is desperately understaffed. I, I know their funding is also an issue that you're going to hear about. We're looking at kind of this hybrid approach to give it a try and see if it works. We don't know, we need to be able to try it to see if it's functional or if it meets the needs of both departments.
Josh?
If, if, excuse me, if department presentations would be the most appropriate time, or here, either one, I'd like a better understanding of what these people would do during the winter with streets versus what they'd be doing in the summer with parks.
So I have asked the department heads who have position requests to be here, so we can hopefully answer those now and add in and then subtract later.
I think this is a novel approach to something I think we knew we were facing with the expansion of our city and the increased parks we're putting online, so it doesn't surprise me, I just, I find this novel.
We've, we've had a lot of discussions about what to do and how to, to do this. We know streets needs more help in the wintertime, and we need, know parks needs more help in the summertime, and this gives both of them an opportunity to have four. When Parks needs it, they've got four, and when Streets needs it, they've got four, I, I think it's a great idea, but
Interesting.
Do you see what the, the council feels about it? And to answer the, we got one And to answer, we got one question and then we've got Brent.
I have a follow-up as well.
A follow-up, too?
Yeah.
We got two questions, and then we got Brent.
Before you cut me off, I just, I'll tell you right now, I got a couple I want to ask.
So first off, for the Street Department, these would be used for winter maintenance, which is snow removal. We think we do a pretty good job in snow removal, but we don't do a really good job in snow removal. Unfortunately, snow removal is a very slow-moving process. And the best way to get good at it is to put more assets out in the field. And so we've, we've been pushing really hard. We've, we've put money aside to buy more trucks, and we want to get a lot better at snow removal. And unfortunately, we've, we've technologied our way out of this as much as we could. We're, we've implemented a whole bunch of new technology that's created efficiencies, but what we're looking for is speed. We just need to get across the town quicker. I always give the example, we're about 280 lane miles, but I'm gonna say 250. So if we have 250 lane miles and they gotta go up and down each, each road four, four times, that's 1,000 miles. And they usually do it between five and 10 miles an hour. And so imagine driving to Chicago at five to 10 miles an hour, how long that would take. And so if you've got 10 people driving that, it's gonna take X amount. If you've got 15, it's gonna make that, that trip a lot faster, pulling their, their leg. And so unfortunately, that's just where we're at. If we want to try and start getting better at snow removal, we just need more assets.
In the case of a winter that does not have as much snow, what would these people be doing?
Yeah, so we have contingency plans for that, so we do a lot of right-of-way maintenance stuff. We do tree trimmings. We do a lot of, we call it shouldering, where we bolster up the sides of the roads where there's no curb and gutter. We do a lot of maintenance on equipment. We, we have a litany of things. We do a lot of levy work in the winters when we can. So we, we have a long list of, of projects for them when they're not pushing snow.
In the six months they would be with us, they would be doing irrigation, watering systems. They would be doing repairs on, on things in our parks, like playgrounds. I've got several guys right now trying to get the pool open. They would be working on awnings or pumps or systems. We have enough work that I don't think it would ever be dry enough to not have something for all of them to do plus in the summertime.
For, for your position in the summer, are they required to have a CDL?
They are. All of our Parks technicians have a Class B CDL, just like Tom's.
And, but we have in the past and still do for these kind of positions, thanks to our simulator, can train them.
Correct. Yeah, we have the ability in-house to walk them through.
To get them and get them that certification, okay. How does supervisory slash the HR side work? So for example, the Parks, like during the six months in the summer, will they be under Ann and?
Well, they'll be a hard split, you know, we'll roughly, you know, September through April through September with Parks. And for those six months, those FTE will show under Ann's division. And then for the winter, they'll be moved under the Street Department, so under Mike.
Okay, Brent, and then Rick.
This is a question for you, Heather. So this is a new position request. Is that all of the anticipated new position requests, or is there a 4B slide that's coming up?
There's a 4B slide because as I was laying in bed worrying about everything I had to present in the next 10 days, I realized I'd missed... I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing with these positions. I've listened to a lot of conversations with them. I wasn't even sure at this point where to slot the business license coordinator. I know we've had a lot of discussions, and then I think it's just kind of percolating right now. So they're on here. Again, I don't know what direction you want to take with these, so I did split them off as a separate item.
But then is that it?
That is it.
Okay.
All right, okay. Rick, and then?
Back to slide 4A if we could for a moment. When we talk about moving people into parks, does that include cemetery and golf courses, tree removal, or other things, or strictly working on parks?
It wouldn't typically include the cemetery unless for some reason, like the tree storm that we had. We absolutely used Park Staff for it. Best-case scenario, it would really be in our park system only and our facilities.
What about, what about golf courses? I know we've got those leased, but I'm hearing reports of a lot of dead trees across our golf courses.
So we work together right now the best we can when there's time. I anticipate, we would love to have some of these positions spend a lot of time working on our tree canopy. But we probably have to kind of ebb and flow and see kind of what we would do there. I'm sure it could help.
But would that change where the money comes from to pay these people if they're working in other departments?
No. The Recreation Division would cover the, any work in the park or in the golf courses. The cemetery, we have just moved manpower when we've needed it. Same with, you know, if we need Peter's help on the pool deck, he comes over and helps.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify thing, one thing and then make a comment. But you said, and I think Heather, you said it, that it would be sort of a hard six months and six months. So there wouldn't be any back and forth during that time?
No.
Okay, that was the question. And then I just wanted to thank you for sort of thinking outside the box here. This is really, this is a novel approach, as Rick said, but I, I think it could have some really good efficiencies and just sort of making the most of our dollars on this, so I really appreciate that. And I think it addresses one of the problems that we've seen just for years now. Most of the time I've been on the council, I think Parks has just been understaffed and we have to address that problem. So I, I like that we're doing that, but I like the way we're doing it, so I commend you on this approach. Thank you.
Councilmember Mansfield.
If I could clarify real quick one thing. We've definitely had a lot of discussions about the management of these employees. And we don't want to put these employees in a position where they're responding to two separate people.
Right.
And so we've had a lot of discussions about that, and that's why we want to have a hard date where it's, you go in here now and this is who you report to and you're going here, so.
So there's no questions about who they're reporting to?
We don't want to put the employee through that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we've got a councilmember Mansfield and then councilmember Cheatham.
I imagine part of this problem is as well is that the difficulty in hiring seasonal workers who don't just want to work in the summer. Do you have any internal seasonal workers that may be able to be trained and moved up into this slot if they want full-time?
So over the last few years, we, my park superintendent, until this summer, we hired a position. He said that was the first time he had not hired someone from his seasonal pool, which I think is a trend that's gonna continue. The seasonal workforce is changing drastically. There's, there's reasons it's difficult. So I anticipate, we'll, we'll try. We absolutely interview our seasonals if, if they're interested. But it's definitely a dynamic that's changing a little bit.
Edum?
I hope there is a Plan B for that six-month plan because of the potential for an early winter or a late winter. You know, we could be dealing with heavy snowfall in mid-April or early May or late September. So to me, there needs to be some flexibility there to make sure that we can accommodate both sides of the weather.
Yeah, we just, we want to keep it as, as fair as we can, of course. You know, if, if we have a, a late winter and they're really getting beat up on, on leaves, let's say, there's some flexibility that we can work with. But as, as, we just want to kind of make a clean break. But we also can put some common sense into that, and if we need to adjust, that shouldn't be a problem.
If there was a catastrophic snow event and Tom called and said, "I need those four," it would, absolutely, we wouldn't hesitate.
What, what problems does that create on the HR side, Heather? Anything?
We would just handle it as it comes on a case-by-case basis. We'll make the flexibility happen to make this work.
Good.
And I think, if I may also, you know, what we're hoping for with, with these is, like, we get good coverage throughout the winter, right? And so if we have a large event in May, maybe for that one large event, we're not as good as we were when we had those four, but we're still sufficient of what we're doing right now. And so I, I think we can, we can work that either way. And I think the, the storm we just had a while back, that wet snow was a prime example. It, it hit both of us, right? Because we were out plowing and they were picking up trees like crazy, so. In that scenario, we probably just, whoever had them that time, they're gonna keep them, right? And then the other department will, will figure out.
I also think it's an interesting thing for some employees. You get to do a variety of things throughout the year instead of the same task day after day. So we might find that we have employees internally that really want those positions. It might become something that's really desired. I don't know.
So we got a follow-up and then we got?
Has there been discussion with employees about this?
Not yet. This is a very new concept. We've been talking about it internally amongst the mayor and executive staff for, I think, three years. We finally felt it was the right time to come forward and ask for it. If council's interested and we put it in the bill, there will be a lot of education for employees as we roll these out in the fall.
Lot of training as well.
Yes, a lot of training.
You forget a lot in six months, right? Like, you know, you're not driving a dump truck every day when it comes time to drive it and vice versa.
I, I think you already kind of hit it. I was gonna bring up that storm that we had, and that was during the winter. So it would have been during your six months, but it was very much a Parks issue with all the trees and the branches. And I mean, it was your issue too, but it was a Parks issue. So that would be an example of where we'd need some flexibility to address. And since it was both departments, you know, then maybe it ends up being, you know, two and two, or all four of them helping with both things or, yeah, how we would figure that out.
Yeah, for that storm is a great example, like the Street Department. We didn't sleep for three days, and then we were, we were good, and then...
We cleaned up for?
Two weeks or whatever, and so I think there's a way we can make that work. So even if they were in Streets during that time, we're gonna work them three, those three days really hard, and then we could ship them over. Because they weren't picking up and cutting trees during the snow event anyway, so.
So 4A, counsel, are we interested in doing this building that this way looks like it, so?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
4B?
I know this is a huge topic that's thrown onto a slide, and I have no idea what kind of guidance to give here.
I think we've had, me personally, I think we've had the discussion amongst the council and stuff. There's a desire to have it. I think that this is a position that in the future, if we feel like we need to remove, we can remove. But I, it will be definitely difficult to add both positions back on in the, in the future if we need to, so. I think it'd be my recommendation to, to add them on. I, we just don't know what a business license coordinator and what that looks like. And so that's gonna be a little bit of work to see where that comes in.
Mr. Mayor?
I've got Rick and then?
I think we'll go ahead and work them in the plan now and see how the budget works out when we get down to the bottom line and see whether those are feasible. Let's not eliminate them because we don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Can I ask you a question of Brent?
As far as I'm concerned, absolutely. He may not like it.
I pointed out of all you were finishing because I, I figured I'd give him the time to walk up. Brent, I know we talked about, for the development of the business license program, you are going to require more personnel. And that's something that you were very clear about and I think makes absolute sense. My question, and we had conversations about kind of like the timeline of this. It's gonna, this is not just a, you know, six months later, we're going to have every business on a business license. The pricing, development of advertisement, marketing program, et cetera, is going to be, and then actually getting people on to the business license is going to be years probably to, to achieve. Is that something, do we need the, both the coordinator slash clerk position and the economic development specialist at the same time? Or could, for example, this year, the economic development specialist have a fiscal year to prepare the business license program? And then in FY '25, we bring on the clerk who then begins the rollout of it in FY '25? Does that, does that make sense? Or '26?
Brent McLean, Planning Development Services Director. So there's a, maybe a little disconnect in, in your understanding what these positions are. So the economic development specialist, that is separate from the business license coordinator. And that, and that economic development specialist, I think their main focus would be economic development within the city and retention of, of businesses within the city. The business license coordinator is, is gonna focus on the business license. And then there would be an additional business license clerk beyond that. So there'd be three positions if you looked at all three of these. In my opinion, that economic development specialist grade nine is very, very low. You will not get a high-quality individual at that, that pay grade. I think that position, if we were to move forward with it, is something that we probably need to look at and see what their duties and responsibilities are. I've talked with Heather about this a little bit, and I really think that, that position is not, at that grade, is not going to be adequate. You're not gonna get the, the level of specialty and expertise that you need. The business license coordinator and the business license clerk, you could space those out a little bit. The coordinator would work with that economic development specialist. And I could see that being maybe a supervisor for that coordinator and clerk. You can lump those as kind of like an economic development division of, of my department. But that coordinator could get things going and a clerk could come in when it, we're ready to really start implementing the process of collecting applications and licensing. And so you could have maybe a half-year funded clerk position, and it could roll in a little bit further down the line. But it will take a long time for the whole program to get up and running. It's not gonna happen quickly. Because there's, there's a lot of businesses in the city of Pocatello. And getting that, that marketing, that word out is gonna be tricky.
Okay, council president alert.
I have a lot of concerns about the business development specialist position, a lot of what you've just outlined. I think to really have that be, to find a strong candidate for that position and have it be effective, I, I don't see that level and that salary being enough. But I do agree with what you were saying and with what Rick has said, to go ahead and put these in the budget because we can always remove them later. But I just want to be on record as saying I'm, I have, I'm not sure that that's, at that level, that that's going to work for what we're looking for. I also, I struggle with that being an in-house position. I think there's, I like the sort of public-private partnership idea better where we work, you know, you and your department work with somebody outside the city, and they can do things we can't do and we can do things they can't do. So the in-house position, I have reservations about it for that reason, too. But I would be in favor of putting them in for now and then we kind of see how that plays out. And then I'd like to see more information about the, the business license coordinator and clerk as well. That part, I think, I, I feel better about having that part in-house, but that's the part we sort of don't know what it looks like yet, so.
Councilmember Nicole?
Well, I think we should leave it in there for now at least. But I sort of have an opposite take to Linda on part of it. I think having an in-house person that represents just the city of Pocatello, advancing our interest is a good thing. And then I have a question for Brent. At what level do you think we would have to fund that to get the premium person?
You're gonna probably need to fund that person in, in a level that's kind of like a division head, department head type level. It's gonna need to be, because if you look at that estimated cost, roughly, what, half of that is salary? And so, you know, to get someone in, in that position at a $50,000 a year salary, you're not gonna get very qualified individuals applying for that position.
It's written as a processing and administrative position. It is not written as a professional-level position, let alone a community liaison.
So in order to get it up to that level, I mean, are we looking at adding another $50,000 to it? Does that do the trick, or?
Probably right in that, that range, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You'll almost need a double wits there.
All right.
So, right now, it's slotted at a nine, which is the same as like an ordinance enforcement officer. A previously graded economic developer was listed as basically a department head. So, it was up above a G17. So, there's a vast difference in what those two positions have been created as. This is more like a position that would work under an economic developer.
So, build it in. Do you want to change that number as we're building, or do you want to leave it there for now? What do you--
I'd prefer to build it higher, and then if we need to bring it down and see if we can hire to lower grade, then we can. But I'd prefer to build it in at where Brent feels would be the ideal place to hire.
60?
What's that?
So, 160, you're saying add 50?
Wherever the G17, 16 level is. Is that what you're saying it was?
I think we should grade it at a 16 or a 17. I can grade it at a 17 and put those costs in, and then I'll highlight them, so we can always roll it back. We'll grade the business license coordinator at the nine, and a clerk will come in under that.
I, I didn't leave the clerk off this year. I think, I think that there's an entire fiscal year's worth of work between those two to get the program going. And that's assuming you hire them. Like, if you give funding for the entire year, the time it's going to take to hire, train, and get started, you're, it's, you're not, you're not going to need the clerk yet. You, you need another fiscal year before the clerk. So, I say leave the clerk off.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay.
All right. So, now we're going to talk about step movement costs. So, when I show you the numbers, this is all three of those little COGS you saw. This is benefits, ad pays, and compensation. Now, this is off of fiscal year '24 benefit rates, which is currently what we have. And everything listed for fire and ambulance does not include their medical. That's just wages and ad pays. So, first up, this is an FYI because this is the last year of our police union contract, and we'll negotiate with them next year. To be clear, we are coming out of two very, very expensive union contracts. We had 3.5 for police this year, and we added a step. So, you see a line that says police unions warrant extra. Those are not ad pays. These are the on-call, call-out, overtime. I need a place to put those because they show up in the salary projection file, so I need the numbers to be whole. So, when you compare them at the end, you have an apple-to-apple comparison. The cost increase on this is, for wages alone, is 586,000 or 6.59%. And then those extras come in at 10,000 or 1.12 for a total overall of just under 600,000. That does include rank advancements as well. And this is the last year of the five-year COPSS grant, so the city contribution is 100%. So, this is the entire salary projection file, which takes five minutes to open on my computer in one slide. So, currently, the cost of a one-step movement, plus the rank advancements in police and fire, plus the rolling of longevity paramedic pay, and adding the step in police, is 1.9 million. So, of that, 3.91% is, over the clean bill, is the general fund coming in at 1.2 million. And I hang, I will break the general fund down for you further in the subsequent slides. So, Jean told you how much money we have, and now I spent it all. So, this is the cost of the general fund overall. I broke this down by employee type. So, you understand how these funds are being distributed. Elected, you, there's changes there. You've had a rate change in January. Also, benefit changes through the year. That's, we didn't change your wage for next fiscal year. That's what the difference is. So, I just wanted to be clear there. Fire management is on a separate scale. Then there's the fire union. There's their extra WOOC. That's the extra line. General employees and police civilians. Well, general employees, and then our extra, police management, police civilian, police warrant, and then the police union extra. So, that comes in at that 1.2 million. If you take out the fire union and this, because we're negotiating, and sworn police, the cost increase is 427,000 for those other groups. So, HR is seeking permission to build the budget with a one-step movement for everyone on the general scale, police management and fire management.
Can you go back one slide? So, that increase, 1.193. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I agree with the recommendation.
Okay.
Me too.
I've got at least four heads nodding to agree with the recommendation right now.
So, last up is our action item six, which is overtime call-out, on-call, seasonal, variable, and WOOC. During fiscal year '24, we did collapse all of the seasonal positions in our utilities and street. So, sanitation, water, WPC gave them up last year, and street no longer have seasonal positions. We converted that into full-time headcount. So, most of the changes you see this year are decreases or shifts in money. The airport is moving 10,000 between two of their different, their, two of their different lines. But for the most part, this year is staying flat or decreasing slightly. I have the whole spreadsheet. I don't think it's pulled up, but it's very close within what we brought last year. You'll see more detail for this in each department's individual presentation. But we would like to adjust the projection file by these amounts.
I agree with it. Got some agreeance on this side, the other side, so let's do that.
And that's everything I have for you today.
Any other questions for Heather?
Benefits RFP, we are in, working with that right now. I'm sorry, I don't have numbers today. AJ and I will be back at some point by mid-June to bring those. And I'm sorry, I don't have a timeframe on fire right now, so I don't know when those numbers will be coming to you.
We'll probably have a, a meeting soon when we can, when we get those, so that the council has an idea of what that looks like as we're building the budget, so. Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Then we will move to agenda item number seven is fiscal year 2025 proposed fee increase. Finance staff and department heads will be present to discuss proposed fee increases.
This is where you need to take your no-dos. Again, Jean, Jean Hill Finance Department with Bonnie, and also Brandy, who is the one that put most of this together for us. So, if we can start. Again, there is a lot here that we'll go through, and I would imagine the department heads, you may want to ask some questions. So, if we start with airport. These are the fees. Do you have, Alan, do you have any questions?
Before everybody comes up, council, do you see any questions for airport?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I can make a comment, serving on the airport liaison committee. There's been a change in the badging procedure, and that's what's affecting some of these license fees. Because of the increased aircraft that we've got out there, there's a new FAA requirement and TSA requirement for badging of people allowed on the field.
Okay. But all of them we're comfortable with?
Good with me.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Tietum.
I saved Alan some steps.
Although he is in a step--
He needs him.
He's in a walking challenge now, so I--
Uh-oh.
I appreciate everybody staying there until you have to come up. Maybe we should go to you.
Anything on the--
Questions here, council?
Is there any changes?
Okay.
How do those, Mr. Mayor, how do those compare to other comparable communities?
Jean?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
I'm honestly not sure either how they compare to other communities.
You know, there's a new statute that goes into effect July 1 that changes some of the permitting for alcohol. I'm just curious.
Chief wants some camera time, so.
Really? Chief Roger Shai, Pocatello Police. So, we had Mallory do a survey of fees before we presented this and asked for fee increases. And what we found is that we're right where we need to be. There are some cities that charge more. There's some cities that charge less. We're right about the middle. And we didn't see a need to increase any fees as far as what you see up there.
Are we covering our costs on doing the work?
Yes.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, you might stay there. Animal services?
No change in fees?
No change in fees. Okay. All right. Thanks, chief.
Business development fees? License fees?
I, I just love the group of lists of things that you got to get a license for.
Yeah.
Mrs. Merrill, Ray is here. If there's any questions?
Questions on these, council?
The pawnbroker fee. That, that involves some police work, doesn't it, Chief Shai? I'm just curious how much effort we put into monitoring things that are pawned in our community.
Chief Roger Shai, Pocatello Police. So, that, that's a great question. We have a program called Leads Online. So, anytime a, someone goes into a pawn shop and they pawn something, the pawn shops have gotten really good about taking copies of their driver's license and actual snapshot of them pawning the item off, and they create a pawn ticket. And so, we're able to cross-reference that information on, on things that are pawned. And we have solved several burglaries, several thefts from the pawn, the pawn shops, putting that information in. And we've tracked with our enhanced Leads Online program. We've tracked property all the way down from, to Arizona. I can tell you, I worked a case not too long ago where we, we followed an Xbox from Chad's rental all the way down to Arizona, and we were able to recover that. So, it's a, it's a great program that we have, and it solves a lot of crime. And the officers are able to go in and get that information. And you can't really deny that that wasn't your, your smiling face when you went in there to, to pawn that stuff, when there's a picture and your signature and a copy of your ID. And it also goes for the recycling places, like Pacific Recycling, so.
But is $50 per pawnbroker sufficient to cover the cost we incur in this activity?
You know, I think the juice is worth the squeeze on that, yes. I, I don't think if we, if we, if we start charging them a lot more, you know, they might not be as, as cooperative to, to comply to that. It's a great tool that we use, and the, the amount of property that we're able to recover, we feel that's sufficient for this year.
Mr. Mayor, one more follow-up. How many of these do we issue? Any idea?
I don't know. However many pawn shops there are in town, I mean, there's quite a few pawn shops that participate, so.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, this is probably a really dumb question, but these are all existing fees. Right?
Yes.
Okay. And we're not changing them? Okay. Okay. Just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Nice one-liner. The juice is worth the squeeze.
I know.
Cemetery?
Oh, this is cemetery.
Any questions, council?
Hang on a second.
Yeah, this is a lot.
We had a, we had a pretty extensive discussion about this last year, if I remember correctly, about resident versus non-resident. Cost of services and, so.
Again, are we, are we covering our costs with these services?
And I can give you my own opinion. I, I think non-resident needs to go up a lot because for, that's pretty cheap for eternity to take care of a spot, but--
Ann Butler, Parks and Recreation Director, I think we're doing okay. Like I said, like the mayor said, I think we need to continue to keep creeping up. Bottom line is, once the cemetery runs out of space, we're still maintaining that facility for the long term, so.
And we're in the ma, we're in the process of opening a new area out to South Bend, as I understand, too.
Right.
Which are going to increase our irrigation costs and maintenance costs, and--
Correct.
So, I have some concern about that.
I know we started creeping last year. We're creeping again this year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I agree with what both the mayor and councilmember Tietum said. And I, I, I know you're creeping up. I'm wondering if we're creeping quickly enough. I think for the non-resident fees, I'd maybe like to see more.
Are we within what we're permitted for, for fee increases?
Are we--
5%, isn't it?
Jared, are, we are within the, the fee that, what, we are permitted--
Without--
To increase?
If we went anymore, would we still be in it? Within it?
Hi, Jared Johnson, City Attorney. So, you can go above 5%. You don't actually have to have the publication and the notice of public hearing and all those things if you go less than 5%. But you can actually go more than 5% as long as you're within the cost of the service being provided. So, yeah, all of these fees. Our practice has always been to bring any fee changes or adjustments or increases in any way to you. Do the public hearing for all of them. But 5% is just your public notice and public comment threshold.
But these are within that?
We were looking at the 5% ourselves and rounding down for residents, if it was a strange number, and rounding up for non-residents is what we did.
Okay.
I'm curious to see when we're done with the PROST plan, how they grade our pricing for the cemetery. I, I just don't know what we're going to get.
Who?
The PROST--
They'll be evaluating all of our fees as part of the PROST plan, all of our Parks and Recreation fees, and comparing them with others. We'll have that data in the next year or so.
I, I would say just leave it until we have that data back and use that data to make any more drastic adjustments.
I agree. Suggesting not to change it?
To, to leave with proposed.
Proposed.
Yeah, not to change the proposed. My apologies.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, it sounds like we agree with that. I would, I would like a way to encourage our good friends to the north to maybe start a cemetery in their community that--
You'd like to stay here?
I would. We charge a tax for it, and we get beat up for it every year, so. Be nice for them to be able to do the same thing.
Here's some more of the, this is your--
More cemetery.
More cemetery fees.
Okay. Questions? Childcare?
I'm just curious about removing it. Do we know why?
I didn't hear--
The, on the childcare license fees, the requirement to submit a license renewal thirty days--
I don't want to answer that question.
Probably is not an and question.
Not an and question, but this--
Chief?
Is this a change in the law?
I don't know why you didn't want to answer it. You could have just made something up for us.
Chief Roger Shai, Pocatello Police, I'll defer to Ann Butler. So, we do not recommend any changes on this. In fact, I've, I've pulled up the email that, that Mallory had sent me. And we didn't want any changes to any fees based off of how we lined up. And we're spot-on on all of our fees when I look across everything, so. I don't know. The requirement to submit a license renewal 30 days prior to expiration is removed. I'd have to get back to Mallory on that. But as far as our daycare, for our childcare licenses, those fees remain the same. This might have been something that was removed because of a change in the law, and I'll follow up with that.
That's what I was wondering, if, if we're just following some new, new law? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commercial activities in parks?
It would, Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt, it would seem to make sense to leave that in place, that 30-day requirement, so that we don't have a lapse in the processing time and find somebody in violation.
I would agree with that. I, and I'm wondering if it isn't, and we'll have the chief follow up on it. I'm wondering if that isn't something that we've done in the past that we don't necessarily need to, and it's just kind of time-consuming for us to-- for us to be sending out reminders that, hey, your license is due in 30 days when somebody should already be paying attention to that. So we'll have the chief get back to us on that.
Okay.
And maybe Mallory or the chief can find something out before we're done today. Okay, sounds good. Commercial activities in the park, public places. Questions, concerns?
Yes. So Ann, generally speaking, it looks like you've gone up about 5% on a lot of the fees. Is that how they're calculated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vendors.
Special events. So this is your special event on vendors?
Concerns with any of these?
How do we know there's only 50 people?
They're going with their honor system. They tell us when we make the reservation, we ask how many people they're anticipating.
Though I'm sure Ann would let you go count if you want, Rick. She'd probably make you a badge.
Event counter?
Yeah.
Okay, let's move up a little bit. Independent vendor, let's see what we've got. Questions with any of those fees for the parks? Okay, construction trade fees?
No changes there.
Engineering review service?
What are the, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The engineering, these are tiny increases. I'm just wondering what that was based on.
I don't know.
Like how we arrived at those numbers?
My guess would be, and I'm not seeing our Public Works Director in here, probably it's just a cost recovery.
Okay.
Issue is gonna be my guess, because I don't typically like to move those very often.
But just better covering of costs?
That's my guess.
Okay.
We'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, we'll find out from Jeff. Oh, let's bounce back up to childcare. Mallory, is Johnny on the spot?
Yep. So Chief Roger Shai and Mallory Bascom from our licensing department.
Mallory, we had a question. The requirement to submit a license renewal 30 days prior to the expiration date is removed. Is there a reason why we remove that?
It actually has not been required for quite a few years. It sounds like the previous licensing officers weren't making them meet that 30-day renewal requirement, because it's essentially all the same to us. If they come in the day of expiring or 30 days before, the process is the same. There's no extra work. And so we just fixed the language so that it read according to what we were actually doing.
Was there extra work if they came in before the expiration date?
No, as long as they come in before they expire, there's nothing different that needs to happen.
So I was speculating, we were sending notice to them, and that's not correct.
Yeah, we send them notice 60 days prior.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, council member Cheatham and then council member Nichols.
So there is no requirement for inspection or any kind of certification?
For the employees, no. We check their background when they initially apply, and then we check anything that's happened within the year since they previously had applied to make sure there's no new charges or anything that would disqualify them. For the facilities, there is an inspection required. We go out and inspect the facility every year. Fire does that, police does that, and then Public Health also does a check on them. And they're informed 60 days ahead of time as well that they need to be inspected. And so when their letters go out, it tells them everything that they have coming up, whether they need to be re-fingerprinted that year. So it lays out the entire process for them.
Interesting.
Okay, council member Nichols and.
So regarding childcare license fees, you're proposing that they just stay the same? No increase?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, super. Any other questions from Mallory? She's here. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mallory.
Thank you.
So we're at fire department fees. It looks like we have no increases there?
Yeah.
Okay, and Parks and Recreation Program rental and administrative fees? Unless counsel has any questions or concerns on fire?
No.
Okay. It looks like Cory, you have, council member Mangum has a question.
Ann, with the cost of, just with the overall cost and maintenance, is this enough of an increase?
You know, she only made the state, I'm talking about Stacy Van Kirk, she only made adjustments to the youth and adult and some of the past prices because they went up last year. She felt like that was a sufficient amount. So I think it's a great deal to come to the rec center for five bucks for a few hours. Yeah, I think that's a great deal. I don't know, I don't want to go up too quickly, though, either, and distract people from making it an affordable place to entertain their children.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Council member?
What about non-residents?
We don't have a way at this time to go between the two. Stacy and I have been talking about it, and we used to have it. They had a resident card, but she said it was quite miserable to try to bounce between the two who had brought in a resident card who hadn't. They'll bring kids to the desk that, you know, by themselves, that don't even know what that means. She said it was just extremely administrative disaster for them, and that's why they did away with it. I don't know how many years ago it's been.
Okay, questions and concerns, counsel? Team sports?
I have a.
Council member Paulson?
When you get to the team sports, it looks like the men's team fee is 13% and the women's is 20% increase. Why is that so high compared to the other sub-five percentages?
I think it's the number of games that they play. The women's league doesn't play as many games as the men's teams do. There's just more teams.
Well, I mean, the increase. Why is the increase so much, like 13% and 20%?
I don't have a great answer for that, but I can find out. I don't think there should be difference in umpire costs or official costs there. So I'll have to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, you've got that written down. You'll just.
I'll find that.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, let's move up to.
Mayor?
Ross Park Aquatic Center. What?
Well, I just seen Merrill just came in. If we want to go back to engineering, or do we want to wait till we're done with Parks and Recs and then go back?
Let's finish this, and then we'll go back. If there's any questions with engineering stuff. Questions with our outdoor recreation rental fees, aquatic center fees?
That's a pretty hefty increase in the group climbing thing. Are we having a maintenance problem or something with that indoor facility?
It's difficult to staff, and Carrie wasn't feeling like we were covering our costs very well. They added an additional staff member for safety purposes.
Do we have a concern? Do you want to adjust it down?
Well, I just, it just seemed like a big jump. But if, you know, if we need to do better in cost recovery, then I'm all in favor of that. As long as it doesn't become prohibitive for those participants.
I also think $100 fee for a group of 10 is still fairly reasonable for most group activities.
A lot of times it's a birthday party, which is pretty comparable or more affordable than some other area activities for children of that many.
Okay. Concerns here?
These seem fine.
See, no concerns there, so let's look at Park Pavilion. Concerns with rental rates? These all seem to be in line with everything else that I'm seeing. Think we're good there.
So go back up.
Before we go to planning, counsel, did you have any questions for Merrill with your, with the engineering fees? No, I'm not seeing any, Merrill. Maybe you just got some extra steps. Okay, looks like you're good.
We just asked sort of where those minor changes came from, like cost recovery?
The minor changes, every year we come in, oh, Merrill, City Pocatello Engineering. The fees every year for this, we change for the. What's the word? I don't have the name. CIP or CIP? CIP, the CIP. We change that in accordance and try to keep it up. Several years ago, this, these plan review and the grading fees are combined. They come from the 1997 Uniform Building Code. And they hadn't been changed for years and years. They were under the Building Department. With the change of guards and everything, we put them into engineering. And so then we try to keep it tracked to current now. So we change that to the, with the CIP every year, and we. CPI.
The inflation adjustment, which is basically.
Yeah. CUP, that's a conditional use. I see planning up there, so it's a conditional use permit, so sorry. I don't do acronyms very well.
Okay.
But that's exactly what it is. We raise it there, and then we round it to the closest 50 cents we can. It may rate, if it's a 25 cent there below, we would end it down or we bring it up, so it kind of keeps going, so we don't have to have one great big burst every 10 years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any issue with collection of these fees?
No.
Good.
They're part of the, mostly part of the subdivision process and some of your bigger commercial. Most of the time, it's all, we wrap it into the other building permits and stuff through erosion control, and we don't worry about the fees if it's so low. We don't do it. There's exemptions for foundations and so forth, so we don't take into account the utility trenches, building foundation stuff. It's basically just the grading of the earth, and so that it's clear. We don't charge for the gross of the fill and the cuts. It's one or the other. It's whatever the greatest is, is what it's based on, so you're not double-dipping.
Okay, super, thank you. Planning and Development Service fees?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask our Planning and Development Director a question, if I may, please.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor and Brent, do you feel that these are covering the costs of performing those services in your department? Or is it general funds supporting these activities?
Brent McLean, Planning and Development Services Director. They're coming very close to covering those costs, for the most part. Sometimes the fees might be a little under, or sometimes they might be a little over, but I think overall they're balancing fairly well. Most of our fee increases are in relation to our public noticing, because the cost of mailing has increased so much. And so the amount of money and time we're spending in our public noticing is where most of our fee increases are coming. And that's a direct reflection of the increase in the cost to mail a notice.
Are there any that you think might need special attention in the future?
I think we're pretty much on target where we need to be with these. We're very competitive with our neighboring communities as far as our fees go. We don't want to be the most expensive either. We do need to make sure we're encouraging development and not having our fees be something that are discouraging to the development processes within the city. So we're just trying to be competitive, and for the most part, we are covering our costs.
Thank you.
Okay, Linda?
The, you mentioned public noticing, it's mostly related to covering those costs. Have those costs gone up substantially? Are we doing more noticing that costs us more, or is it a combination?
The number of notices isn't going up, but what is increasing is the cost to mail a letter, so the direct reflection of a stamp, essentially. And so we're hoping there's some changes in the legislature that they're getting rid of some of the requirements for certified mail, which is a huge benefit for us, the amount of time and costs associated with sending certified mail letters to, you know, at times 30, 40, 50 properties at a time. It takes days to go through the process of filling out a certified mail application for each one. So that will be very beneficial for us as a city. But those cost increases are essentially just the increase in the stamp.
Okay, thank you.
Super.
Yes.
But then we do have increased labor cost, and we have increased cost of the envelope and all of that. So we are sort of absorbing it.
Yes, we are absorbing some of those things. And we constantly look at that every year, just to see, you know, how, where are we in the amount of time we're spending on those things and who's processing those notices? And there are labor costs associated with those things.
Right, thank you.
But the juice is worth the squeeze.
Juice is worth the squeeze.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Looks like our police department has no changes. Questions for sanitation changes?
I like just, we have a rate study.
Yeah. We follow that, we're usually pretty solid, so. Other questions? No proposals, changes in the sediment fees? Transit system, questions? Okay. Then utility billing fees, questions? Okay, water department fees? And we'll move up to residential unmetered customers. That's still covered there. Private fire protections? Not seeing any questions. Water pollution control? Okay, council member Cheatham?
Are we charging enough for outside city limits?
I don't think so, but.
Well, that's...
But that's what our rate study says, so.
Levi Adams, WP Superintendent. We are, there's not a whole lot of outside. When you're discussing outside, like the city of Chubbick, they have their own set of rates. Very similar to, you know, it's all laid out within that rate study. So, there's not many outside of the actual sanitary sewer system that's connected to the city, sir. And most of them are probably on South Fifth, but, you know, obviously, we're starting to annex a lot of those in, so they'll be taken care of with that rate. It's not, the amount of in, revenue generated is not.
It won't have a big effect, then, on your revenues when those become city taxes?
No.
Are we charging Chubbick enough?
We have an MOU with Chubbick that comes up every 10 years. We can have a discussion on what that's going to be when that comes up again. That's kind of where we're set with those. Because Chubbick takes care of most of, I shouldn't say most, of all of their transmission to the city. We're just cost, or charging them to treat the water that's there. So, it doesn't cost us anymore to treat the water, whether it's coming from Chubbick or from Pocatello. The cost to treat the water is the same. If we wanted to charge them an outside-the-city rate, that would be, you know, above my pay grade to change that decision.
Mr. Mayor? If I may, follow up. If I may, to me, there seems to be, I mean, we're doing more than just treating their water. We're hauling their solids. We're doing, you know, treatment of any chemicals or things that might come down the line. I guess, are we, are we getting a fair price for what we're doing for those residents who don't live in this city and don't support us with property taxes as opposed to having citizens of Pocatello subsidize that service?
I don't believe that we're subsidizing the service. I mean, they're still charged the cost of what it costs us to do the treatment. When I say treat the water, it is the full gamut, whether it's that. And as well as, and they take care of, like I said, the collection of it and the pumping it to the plant. They also take care of all of the pre-treatment requirements that we have within the city. They have their employees taking care of that. We work with them as kind of a supervisory type position over that. But all within that, the cost of treating the water is, you know, a certain cost, whether that's, you know, 50,000 in Pocatello and 20 in Chubbick. You know, it's all collected from us. You know, and we are not tax-supported at any point within our department.
Okay, then I've got Council President Luric, and then Councilmember Mansfield.
I think you said that we review that agreement with Chubbick every 10 years. Do you know when the last time was?
I knew I should have said that. I don't have the answer.
26 is when we've got it. I think it's either 26 or 7.
It's coming up in a few years, but we haven't. There's some, there's some things within the agreement that triggers changes. We kind of bumped up against that a little bit, but it's been.
I thought I remembered a couple of years ago, some reason to look at that.
They wanted to make some changes. I apologize for talking over you. They wanted to make some changes to the agreement and do some different things, of which point would open it up, and then we could make our own changes. They kind of backed off from that because they could see the benefit in not making the changes right now. Like I said, when that agreement comes up, we will make sure to have the involvement of the council in the next MOU with Chubbick.
Thank you.
Councilmember, oh.
That was my question.
All right. Any other questions?
Just a comment. It seems that 10 years is a long time. In today's fiscal and financial world, that's a long time to lock into an agreement. It would seem to me that we might be better served in the future doing something that is half that term and perhaps allows for annual adjustments.
The agreement does allow for adjustment. Their agreement with the Chubbick says that we will charge them based on our rate studies. So, as the rate studies comes in, as the rates change within our rate study, those changes then are passed on each other. They're not locked into a single, singular rate. Their rates adjust as everybody else adjusts.
That addresses, the biggest piece there is it addresses how much they can send to us. And if they go over that, then they have to stop building and stop growing until we can adjust that if the council so desires.
And that was the issue?
That was the issue before is they were bumping up against the edge of that with their EDUs and EDUs?
No, with EDUs, but the actual flow. They were coming up, they were within 10, 15% of their, what was allowed in the MOU, which was causing us to look at this. Since then, they've done some work and changed some things, so their flows have actually decreased slightly since that time, and they haven't felt the need because they could see that there's some lacking things on our side of that agreement that if they were going to open it up, we would have included. So, it'll be some interesting conversations in the future when it comes to it.
They were interesting a few years ago. Okay, system capacity fees, any concerns? Any questions? We'll go to large industrial users. Zoo?
Thanks, Levi.
Questions and concerns? That's it. We got all the way to Z.
Can we just ask council's direction if you're okay with these fees and with the revenues that we just, you move those ahead in the budget process, and then you can change the fee?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we'll do, is include those as we move forward.
Thank you very much for your time, council.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to.
Hold on, don't go anywhere, Gene.
Yeah. I just more a comment than anything regarding the fees. I, of course, would want to see fees as low as we can possibly get them or keep them. But we're in an inflationary environment that you said has to continue, and I just want to make sure across the board that we are increasing the fees adequate to cover our increased costs.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's sort of my opinion.
I mean, are we doing that? I mean, in your opinion, have we done a fairly good job with that? Probably not across the board, but.
I think we can, you know, there's, on fees, right, you have what the market will bear. And then, in competition versus just increasing to cover the CPI, I think what we've heard is that we're close to market. And so, should we charge more to cover the CPI? Probably. But I think that market right now is kind of holding us back a little bit. Does that make sense?
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you, council and staff. Thank you for your hard work putting this together. We know that as we build the budget, that a lot of these decisions that were made will probably be changed. They can be changed, probably will be, but at least we have a good, a solid starting point for the budget presentations. And so, we'll, we'll just keep putting those together then. With that, we are adjourned.